Good evening. Today is Wednesday, May 2, 2018, and this is the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission that's called into order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call. Nick Kern. David Parent.
Michael Kervosoff.
Darrell Bordeaux.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Next item is consideration of the meetings. First minutes, first minutes we want to consider is the regular meeting of April 4, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve the meetings?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. Minutes from April 4, 2018 be approved as submitted.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Call for a vote. Jim?
Yes. Yes. Abstain.
Abstain. Is that enough to pass?
Special meeting?
No, the regular meeting. We only have two, we only have two votes in favor.
Oh, well, then you'll do it next time. You could do it next time.
Okay. We'll table that for the next meeting. Next item is this meeting, is the minutes of the special meeting held April 25, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we approve special meeting minutes April 25, 2018 as submitted.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Call for a vote. Terrell?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to old business. Application A-18-4.1, 291 Hall Avenue, Community Lake Park, Wallingford Parks and Recreation Department, tree thinning and removal. Is all here?
Yes, I believe they're here. Well, you want to step up to the dais? And speak into the microphone and say your name and your position.
This is on. It's on. I'm Dave Gielo, the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission.
Jason Michael, Parks and Rec Commissioner.
Who's next? All right, you want to just give us a short summary?
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure how this goes.
Well, a short explanation as to why we should approve your, the application.
Okay. Okay, just quickly, back in April of 2016, we, the Park and Rec Commission, had started looking at the thinning of the woods between the linear trail and Community Lake, in the Community Lake area. We set up a meeting with the Park and Rec Commission, the Wallingford Environmental Office, the Conservation Commission, and the Linear Trail people to make sure that we covered all our bases, to make sure everybody was on board with what we were doing. Community Lake is one of the most used parks in Wallingford. There's a baseball field, a pavilion, volleyball court, tennis court, basketball court, and it's the beginning of its linear trail. Our idea was to have a passive view of what was once Community Lake. The area during the summertime cannot be seen, in other words, we cannot see the lake if you've standing at the pavilion. So what we're trying to do is thin the dead, the dying, the invasive, the trees, the bushes, to beautify this park because it is one of the most used parks in the town of Wallingford. Late December of 2016, we cleared or thinned the first 300 feet of the area. As you gentlemen know, that we all took a walk down there and to see what it was like. We are now looking to thin out the remaining 600 feet that goes to the original.
Drop coastal as mic, Dave. Pull that mic down.
That goes to the original boat launch area that is closer to Hall Avenue. We had gone in there and marked, Jason and I had gone in there and marked the first 300 feet with yellow tape on the trees and bushes that we're going to save. We have not gone in to do the last 300 feet due to the fact that it's so difficult to get in there, and we just felt that if we went in there, marked it again, and we did not get approved, it's just kind of a waste of our time, and we're gonna, we get ticks and everything else attached to us. So we're gonna mark it if we get approved. We're gonna mark the remaining similar to what you've seen us do. Okay. And again, on April 24, we, most of all you gentlemen, took a walk to see what it was like. And we're just looking for approval to do the remaining 600 feet, and then that'll be it. That's as far as we're gonna go.
So here, you give out this map. Is this the map that you need for this to go forward?
Yes, this is the plan. I don't have enough copies for everybody. Please share because our Zara machine wasn't cooperating. But this is the plan that came in Monday. This is the latest, greatest plan. And Dave, do you have a copy of this plan you want, or do you want me to hit the high points on this as over here?
John had sent, yeah, John had sent this to you. John Goboluk had sent this to you.
Right. Do you want to read these, the high points in over here if you've got a copy of the same thing I do?
What you have highlighted?
On the, on this side of the map.
It's, it's highlighted?
Well, it's got little stars, little stars.
Okay.
Yeah.
The southern central and northern pond access depicted as reference points only. The paths that are, that are now there for canoes and kayaks, we felt that we really didn't want to do anything with that until after the clearing is done because there might be better access. Right now, the path that is there and it was done by Roman.
Rosensky.
Yeah. It's very dangerous. It's long, it's dangerous to put a kayak or canoe into that area. So there is a central path, and we just as soon not do anything with any path until we're done with the thinning process, and that'll be another process.
Can I ask more questions, Dave?
So again, every tree that's marked with the yellow tape is to stay. That's basically the idea. When we're gonna do this is gonna depend on when we get approval, we're gonna have to go to get three bids again, so we might not do this until fall. But we really, you know, this is the beginning of our path, is to come to you folks.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional comments?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any additional comments?
Yes, I'm just gonna read some of the highlights here. Maintenance to be provided by Department of Public Works and Park and Recreation, part-time maintainers monthly. Then we discussed the timing of it. I had suggested when we were out there, you know, the birds have already started nesting, and the leaves have started to come out, so it's, it's best to do it either earlier, you know, March, April, or later, October, November, you know, when you don't have all the leaves and vegetation to deal with, and they've got to get quotes, so by the time they get quotes, all the leaves will be out. So I'd favor it in the fall, the work, when I meant it. You can act to decide on the approval or not tonight, but then the work would be done in the fall. The one thing I, let me back up, that I will chime in about that canoe and kayak trail. This was put in with NRCS, it was NRCS-funded activity. It was, the Wetland Commission approved in 2010. It was pretty good at the time, but what's happened is two things. People found out that it drops off too steeply into the water. That's what Dave was referencing when he said dangerous. But also, now it's kind of dangerous because it's eroded so much, and that black tarp paper is sticking up out of the ground, and so it's, it's, it's kind of slippery and dangerous that way in terms of erosion. We're gonna have to address that to get that, it's only gonna get worse. Maybe Public Works can do something, or we have to get that under control. There's another spot of erosion just south of the pavilion, between the pavilion and the lake. That, they're just, there's an area where the hills eroded. Why we care about it is that erosion, that sediment is carried down when it rains, across the linear trail, and then down into the lake. That's why we want to get that addressed. Both are fairly easy fixes. Not a lot of work or funding would be involved. They can be done by our Public Works Department. The other thing is the, in here on your plan, it says no 20-foot buffer from shoreline. This is, by and large, I'm in favor of this project except for that. What do you do? It's called riparian area along the shoreline, the buffer area, where the, where the wave action of the lake and the wind and the flooding eats at that shoreline. People come down right to the water's edge because they want to look at the water, they want to stand there, they want to see if they could see a fish or whatever, and it's gonna be a heavily trafficked area right along the edge, as we already see on the northern part when we were out there. They like to stand at that shallow area and, you know. Anyway, so I would like to see, unlike the northern area where all the shrubs were removed right down to the lake, right down to the water's edge, I would like to see some vegetation left in this area that's now proposed for work within 20 feet. It helps with erosion, it helps with, you know, trafficking along the edge, wear and tear on the edge. The root mass of the vegetation helps hold that, the wetland dirt along the lake in, helps hold it in and maintain the shoreline. So, there it is. That's the one way that my environmental planner comments, that's one way I differ from what they want to do down there.
Make it real quick. The three star points, maintenance, no 20-foot buffer, tagged access, this will be done in the fall. Are those, and the will it stay? Are those the five conditions of approval that you would put in this?
Oh, no, no, no. That's what the Park and Rec Commission came up with.
So we don't, so we're gonna have to consider that. Okay, do you have any further?
This looks like this is May, and by the time we get bidding, by the time we go through the whole process, it's gonna be the fall before we're gonna do this anyway.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's gonna be July, which is not a good time.
Okay. Do I have any comments from commission members?
Yeah. This isn't what we talked about. We talked about clearing to the edge of the pond and then planting plants that we knew weren't gonna be abrasive species to carry over, you're concerned about erosion, whatever you decided as far as wetland plants or whatever. We talked about clearing all that crap that's already there. I mean, it was just a big knot of everything, junk. I never, never agreed to stop 20 feet from the water's edge. That's why we were out there for the sidewalk. So I'm opposed to doing this 20-foot buffer that you want to leave. I don't know how the rest of commissioners feel, but I'm gonna express how I feel first because this is what, I wasn't under the impression when I walked away from down that sidewalk, this is what we talked about. Furthermore, we talked about the two ramps that need to be corrected. The Department of Public Works said they would repair them. We asked that they be repaired because they're a liability and they're not safe, all right? They were gonna talk to the horticulturist or whatever the gentleman's name is on the Conservation Commission, and they were gonna flag trees that we wanted to save, that we thought would give shady area to protect. The other thing you gotta remember, the trees you save, the grass isn't gonna grow under because they get no sunlight, you're not gonna get a lot of grass, so they need some type of rooting, acacia or something that's gonna hold the earth. You know, you're concerned about erosion, but, and then my other concern is you're talking about now because of the timeframe, it's just gonna be done in the fall. What kind of plantings can you put there for stabilization in the winter time after they clear cut the whole thing? So you're talking about doing it in the fall. Is there enough time in the fall for vegetation to grasp, it's gonna make it through the winter? Are we gonna have erosion like we had this past winter because of all the rain and all the, you know, the storms that we had? So I want to think twice about the timeframe. I think some of it should be done whenever they get the bidding process done and go ahead and do it. I mean, the birds are gonna move, but they're gonna locate. It's not like we just clear cut, clear cut 50 acres of land down there, and the poor birds got no place to go. You know, that's, that's just how.
That's, I, that's fine. They can do it now. It's, I was thinking more the vegetation mass. But let me, I want to clarify, absolutely all the invasives, either a vine or a shrub, should be taken out, even if it's on the water's edge, absolutely. Anything falling down, anything broken, some invasive trees out there should be taken in. I just like some natural plants, like there was native gray dogwood shrub that grows about five feet by five feet. We saw one down there. Just something left by the edge of the water, just something, something green by the edge of the water. It doesn't have to be 20 feet, even 10 feet would be better than nothing, something.
Well, as part, part of the condition of approval, can't we ask them to throw a few of those shrubs in that your request and you want?
Costs money. I was just thinking to keep some, sure, that's gonna cost money though, but yeah, yeah, we can do that.
All right. I want to hear the other commissioners, and then I want to come back to you.
I have no problem with the plan as presented. As far as the 20-foot buffer goes, I'm fine with that. Go right down to the, to the water's edge.
Yeah, and I agree with that as well. I mean, when we walked the site, I think all the trees that you guys tagged are ready to keep, look to be good, so if you guys continue to do that for the remaining, I believe, 300 feet?
So if I could just round it out, the, the, the whole idea was birthed at the Parks and Rec to create a passive place for people to sit and look at the water. That didn't have to be permitted or worry about someone kicking off because they had a permit to play a game, no balls flying by, just a quiet place. And we viewed it as a gem in Wallingford that no one sees. It's, it's a body of water that has a park right next to it that towns would kill for, and we've blocked it, allowed it to be blocked out by, by all this vegetation. It really doesn't get much bigger, and I'm shooting from the hip here, than, you know, 40, 50 feet total before we're at mowable grass again. So to leave 20 feet of, now, if the vegetation is spotty and you leave open, clear paths to the water, I think that was the original vision and, and what we imagine, what you see on the, on the north side that's already been thinned out, to mimic that along with the, the dogwood bushes and things like that. But I think what we're trying to avoid is anything that's gonna grow knee-high for 10 feet, even 15, 20 feet is, is gonna kind of negate the whole idea of the look of this shoreline. And we're talking about if you went 600 feet by even 50 feet, it's 30,000 feet, which is three quarters of one acre of a thinned area, opposed to the 70-plus acres of the entire park.
Okay, please keep in mind that, that in that 300 feet that we had looked at, there is 45 to 50 trees being saved. So we're not clear cutting. We are leaving a tremendous amount in that 300 and 50. That's an average of about a tree every six feet. So it's pretty hard to, to save a spot. You know, if you gotta cut a tree here, well, you gotta get to it. You know, so if a land, if a tree person comes in there, they gotta get through one tree to get to the next tree. But we are, again, we're saving 45 to 50 trees in that 300, first 300 feet. That's a lot.
Nick, I'd like to go back to you. Do, I mean, I, you say, we're, because we're talking about the 20-foot buffer, and then you say, now, my understanding will know it's not really a 20-foot buffer, or I'm not really sure what, what you're doing on the edge of the pond, if you just.
We're gonna, my, are you comfortable with us going right to the edge of the pond if they plant a few plants afterwards, as far as clearing up all the garbage that's there, the branches that are laying in the pond? I mean, there's some trees that are actually laying inside the pond.
But they're gonna take those out.
Right. So if, if we can get the Rotary Club, or we can get, there's other clubs in town that can donate half a dozen shrubs, you know, there's enough, enough town input, I think we can generate some money if need be to decorate, to put some stability back in there. But I don't, I, we need to go from the edge of the water up, is my feeling. And you're talking about not doing it here. So are you comfortable if we eliminate that 20 feet?
There are, um, a lot of, there, I don't know, a lot, there are willows there that grow, their roots are in the ground, but they grow, they hang out over.
The willows are staying.
The edge of the lake.
Willows are staying. Willows are staying. It's right on, it's on the sheet.
Oh, okay.
Around the print.
Well, that's good. That's good for the edge. You need some protection for that edge. And sure, they can plant more plants, it's just costs a lot of money. But yes, that's a good idea if they can find the funds, that'd be great.
So you don't have.
Keep, keep in mind that that center section where there, there's a kind of a path, there's only about 25 feet from the edge of the water to the edge of the trees, so it's, it's kind of a no-brainer to clear it all the way down.
All right, so you're being charged to go to the water's edge, all right?
Yes.
Um, I just want to point out that one inch on this map is 80 feet, so it's not, so it's 80 feet, so, yeah. This map is, is the scale on this, one inch is 80 feet.
But if you actually measure that center area, it's only 25 feet from water's edge to the edge.
To mowable grass.
Yeah, we were out there.
Yeah.
Okay. See, if you had to say, first thing is.
Significant activity.
Yeah. May I have a motion to deem this application not to be a significant activity?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A-18-4.1, 291 Hall Avenue, Community Lake Park, Wallingford Park and Rec Department be deemed a non-significant activity?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, entertain a motion that, application A-18-4.1, 291 Hall Avenue, Community Lakes, tree thinning and vegetative removal be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A-18-4.1, 291 Hall Avenue, Community Lake Park, Wallingford Park and Rec be approved with these following stipulations, that the environmental planner be notified prior to commitment of work. On the, on the print they provided us tonight, there will be a, the 20-foot buffer will be to the shoreline and will no longer be a buffer there, so that's an extent. And if fine time, or fine fit, Erin can provide you with wetland plaques along the water's edge to let the town know that we were involved in your little project.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Darrell?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
New business. Determination, 18-4.1, 528 South Cherry Street, Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company, request for determination that proposed sand extraction and sand processing facility and proposed warehouse and office developed to be located on proposed lot to be known as 10-20 Tollis Road does not require permitting. Ms. O'Hair.
Um, let's see. Okay, back in February, it was February 7th, meeting was canceled due to a snowstorm or something, so we had our special meeting February 8th, and the commission entertained a request from the developer to, to render a determination that a wetland permit was not required on the, regarding the two-lot subdivision. The Onyx property is, they're gonna break off a lot, a 26-acre lot. So, so the commission rendered the determination that wetland permitting for that subdivision was not required. Now we're back here to look at the next step, which is the sand, the next, the, there's two, there's three applications pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we're looking at the sand processing project and the warehouse office development proposal. So now, these two development proposals are what's gonna be talked, discussed tonight, and attorney Malloy submitted a letter on April 26. After conferring with our law department, and I conferred with the law department, I sent you out the memorandum that went out to law, blah, blah, so it was determined by the law department that, that they should submit a request for a determination that wetland permitting was not required for these two development proposals. So they're here tonight to talk about that.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes. Good evening for the record. My name is Joan Malloy. I'm an attorney with Lockland Fitzgerald. My office is located at 150 South Main Street in Wallingford, Connecticut, and present with me is Mr. Richard Couch of Martinez Couch Associates, who is the engineer on the project, just in case there's a technical question. You hopefully received a copy of the letter, which I submitted to Erin requesting this hearing, or to be placed on the agenda, I should say. And I did sort of outline the history. When my client was preparing applications for the subdivision, the sand excavation, and the ultimate development of the property, we met with Erin for a considerable period of time. And the purpose of that meeting was to discuss whether any inland wetlands approval was required. We explained the subdivision, we explained the sand processing, we explained the final site development. We presented to her the reasons why we believe no permit was required because the edge of the property is 500 feet from the nearest water course, which is basically, looks like a drainage swale, and like 1,300 feet from the nearest wetland. It's all sand, so all the drainage is staying on site, so there are no impacts of wetlands or water courses. I wrote her a detailed letter in January, going through all the sections of the regulations which say when you need a permit. And I asked her whether or not, she agreed with us that no permit was required. And if you looked at the environmental report that she provided in the February meeting, she stated that she agreed that there were no wetlands impacts and therefore no permit was issued. She qualified that by saying that she hadn't seen the final plans. The final plans aren't substantially different from what she saw when we met in November. We did come before you in February because she felt that we needed to, and we did. And we are in front of planning and zoning because we did not believe we had to come to inland wetlands. And now she's raised the issue that the trucks that are entering and leaving the site could track some sand onto the street, it could go into one of the catch basins, not be captured by the sumps, travel down the stormwater sewer system, and eventually get into the Quinnipiac River. Our response to that is we are required to have detailed sedimentation and erosion controls. And I described the, some of those measures in the letter that I sent, which included the required anti-tracking pad, that we're gonna put silt sacks in the catch basins, that we're gonna be doing street sweeping, we're gonna be inspecting and maintaining the silt sacks in the catch basins that are proximate to the driveway, and that there is a. and that there is a, um, a wash rack so that the tires of the vehicles exiting the site are going to be going through and washed. And from our perspective, um, that's a sedimentation and erosion control, not a regulated activity. I'm, I'm not aware of any vehicle leaving a construction site having to get a wetland permit because some sediment might get into the road as a result of that. Nonetheless, um, we did have discussions with Jenna Small and, and Jenna said she could not as a matter of law say that it was not a regulated activity, that that was a determination that this commission would have to make. But if you've read her memo, I, I think she has indicated, um, that she questions whether or not there really, this really is a regulated activity. And that there is not, uh, at least I have not seen any substantial evidence, um, that indicates that this is a regulated activity. And it's going to, and, and because it's going to have an impact to wetlands or water courses. But nonetheless, in accordance with what Janice has recommended, I again ask to come before this commission. I must express my frustration, having spent considerable time trying to determine whether we ever had to come from, in front of you, and now at the last minute, being faced with this, well, you have to come in front of the commission.
I mean, you said, my, but, okay, or my understanding that we're doing now is whether is this, whether or not the sand excavation, and they're building another property, okay, requires a, and then on wetlands permit, that's the sole issue here is not the, and from what I'm hearing, that the sediment or sediment, we're just going to say sediment problem or sand problem on the road is something that, uh, can be handled by planning and zoning, is that your contention?
Well, I, I think it's covered by sedimentation erosion controls anyway, and that's utter, but the removal of the sand is having no impact to
Okay, and that's your, that's your, that's your contention. And I'm saying, but you're also saying, and I think the, Janice Small is saying, that that particular issue really should be with some other commission, namely, uh, planning and zoning, and that's what your belief is.
Yes.
Actually, Janice Small, Corporation Counsel, says in her memo, that's why they're here tonight. She suggested they come tonight
Yeah.
So that the commission can decide if this sand deposition that's expected in Tully's Road from this very active project that's going to go on for five, four or five years with, by their estimates, 500 trucks going in, bringing in coarse sand coming into the site, and a thousand trucks taking the finished processed sand off the site, that in that process of in and out, that some sand will get in Tully's Road.
Okay.
Now, if I could, if I could just point out that the, um, subdivision map that you all saw on February 8th didn't have, uh, catch basins shown. The engineer forgot, I guess, to put the catch basins in the road and the storm sewers in the road. So at that time, I was unaware that there were catch basins and storm sewers in the road, but there are. Now, since then, the plans do show the catch basins and the storm sewers. And yes, if we look at them, or I don't know if they've brought copies, but if you look at them, they are planning to put erosion controls in the road, and we can get into some detail if, if you feel there enough or whatever. And yes, planning and zoning will be looking at that aspect, but the, I guess, I'd like to ask Attorney Malloy, what, what section she's, she's applying under tonight? I know the law department asked her to come before the commission, is it under section 7.2, is that the section?
I, I'm not applying, I'm here because the Corporation Counsel, Janice Small, said that only this commission could make the final determination as to whether or not a permit was required. I have explained the reasons why I do not believe a permit is required.
Now, the, just to, to be clear, what, I'm sure they're going to put in the erosion controls, that, that's standard, all our projects do, all our bigger projects do put silt sacks in the road, like right now Choate has silt sacks in the road, and Chimney Hill subdivision has silt sacks in the road, that's regular procedure. What's a little different about this is what happens down the road, when this sand gets taken down the road toward the west, it, there's a direct outfall into the Quinnipiac River, in the bridge apartment, that's where it outfalls to the Quinnipiac River.
But my point is, as I, I wrap my head around this, and as a matter of fact, I even, this item, this matter, such publicity, I got a call from my son, who's a civil engineer in Vermont, asking me about it. It would seem what you're asking us to do is somehow impose some conditions where there's no application. Because if the, if there's no impact from the excavation and there's no impact of the building out of wetland, I don't see where, you know, I, I don't, I don't see where I have the jurisdiction to say, well, that's all right, Phil, you know, file an application, we'll put in these terms and conditions to protect our, to protect the commission and protect the town. It doesn't seem like I can do that, if, I can't really ask you for an application. And then when we read Attorney Small's letter, I'm just, um, just trying to say, okay, that, oh yeah, it goes down here. It appears to me that any concerns can be addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in forms of conditions relating to any impact the sand may have on nearby catch basin. So we have somebody, since you've got planning and zoning, they can approve that, they may want, you know, maybe other changes to the road, and then it would be up to the, as far as enforcement, I guess it'd be up to their zoning enforcement. So I think that really, um, to ask us, or for us to ask the applicant for, uh, commission, for a permit or to submit a permit puts us in a place where maybe, uh, we don't have, you know, we don't have any jurisdiction or where, uh, and therefore we shouldn't do it. But I've spread my piece, commissioners?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead, because I have a little wrapping up.
The thing that is frustrating, and yes, it is a rather unique situation, and I've discussed this with, uh, Janice Small, it is a unique situation in that in other projects, for instance, with this warehouse facility, that is going to be like 300,000 square feet of surfaced area, it's way over the 20,000 foot, square foot, uh, surface area trigger in our provisions. But what's different about this one is the runoff during construction, the runoff is not going off-site into a town sewer, town storm sewer, like with Chick-fil-A, for instance. Why did they have to get a permit? Because their runoff could potentially introduce sediment from their site into the storm sewer system, which was going into the nearest brook. In this case, there's no pipe going from this sand site, this sandy site into, into the brook directly. The, the water, when it rains, the water's going straight down because it's pure sand. So that is what's fundamentally unique about this site. There's very few sites in town that don't use storm sewers and don't pass their storm flows either into a drainage basin or into a, into a wetland or a stream or out into the town storm sewer. They usually use one of those three mechanisms to get rid of the, the rain that comes down. This is fairly unique. And that's fine for the warehouse, because I think the rain's going straight down. But in this, with the sand, what I got to think of, with the sand process, this is going to be, this is a 26 acre site, they're bringing it down 14 feet, it's going to go for a number of years, I guess it's three, three or five years, a lot of in and out traffic, and the sand is going to get in Tully's Road, and then it's going to get in the Quinnipiac River, and then the questions, even with the best of maintenance, even if you attend to those silt sacks and you sweep the road. And so I was saying, how can we get a handle on that? Because unlike when sedimented flows come out into a stream or on a bank, I can ask a developer to put in a check dam or hay bales, something to stop it. But if it's a direct outfall, I don't see how I could catch it. But this is the, the problem. Now, of course, the, at that time, if this comes to be, if the day comes where sand is actually coming out of that outfall, then I could issue a cease and desist order and ask them to do something about the sand. So that was my attempt to, to get around that, that's all it was. It was an attempt to, to prevent that inevitable thing from happening, the potential for the introduction of sediment into the Quinnipiac River.
Okay. I think for example, okay, first of all, this Small, um, who would have to defend us in any action, by the way, says that's not, that's really not enough. And you have yourself, uh, made the case, this, this is unique, it's not like anybody else where there's, you, you can't do 20,000 square feet without impacting some water in almost any other place in town. So I'm not really seeing the, um, I'm not really seeing the need for any permit. Mr. Kern?
Aaron, the cat fighting should have gone outside of this chambers, it shouldn't be here tonight. Jen, I'm disappointed in Janice Small, because she should have rectified this between the legal eagles what need to be done and not done. You know yourself that soil and erosion control goes to planning and zoning. If there's an issue with the, planning and zoning has an issue with them, they should address it with them, we should not be involved there. We, our jurisdiction is wetlands. You're talking about a fragile, uh, down the road scenario that is almost impossible. You just said yourself that when it rains, there's, you can have three inches of rain go out there an hour later and you're walking on dry ground, because it just sinks right into the soil. So I have more confidence in the planning and zoning with their soil and erosion control plans, that they've got all this covered. We just had a project across the street that we, we approved of, and it went fine. Um, I'd been down there when they were doing the project, there was a little bit of dust in the road or a little bit of sand in the road, they had a sweeper that cleaned it up. I'm sure this developer is, is qualified and willing to do whatever it takes to keep the street clean, the catch basins empty, and, and they're not going to have a problem, he's not going to be stockpiling the sand at the end of the road, so when it rains, it's going to go out into the road and then wash down the street. Because this product that he's producing is a, of a valuable product. So he's going to be watching it very closely, where it goes and how it goes. So I don't believe we have any jurisdiction to, to tell him to come in here in front of us, to give him a permit for what? I'm not sure, we're not in S and E. We're not in S and E.
So I discussed this with Attorney Small, and what she suggested, or maybe you guys know this, I'm obligated to, I do it with everything you approve, I send a report out. Planning and zoning is not supposed to act on something until they get a report out from the wetlands commission. So if you decide that there's no application necessary here, and you, you determine that a well and permitting is now required, um, I'd like you, I will put that in the report to planning and zoning, but this is your opportunity, and I recommend that you take it, that in that report that goes to planning and zoning, that you say certain things, that you are concerned about the Quinnipiac River, you're concerned about the possible, the potential for sand to be transported into the Quinnipiac River, and therefore you, it's extra important that, that planning and zoning puts strict erosion controls on this and that the procedures are followed through, it's very important to the wetland commission, that's what I would suggest.
You're our environmental planner, you're, it's your job to write this report to S and E or planning and zoning, you just said that, you told us that. We aren't here to suggest that you write this into the letter, you're the staff person, you're the qualified person to let them, notify them and tell them what needs to be done. So I feel as though we, there's no jurisdiction here tonight, we're not going to make, we're going to vote, that we don't need to give them, they don't need to come in front of us for an application, and I'm not really sure why they're here, but I'm disappointed that we had to go this route, we could have resolved this a lot quicker and a lot, a lot easier than to drag all these people in tonight to find out that. You need to write a letter to planning and zoning, your recommendation, and, and put in your recommendations what you feel needs to be done, so you feel comfortable with it. We're comfortable with the project the way it is.
Okay, to be clear, I'm not talking about when I get referred the plans from planning and zoning, I make comments when I get referrals, all the departments make comments, I'm talking about what the wetland commission is going to act tonight, you're going to act, I think, I get the sense, you're going to act to determine that no wetland permitting is required. I'm suggesting if you could put a condition on that, the condition being, uh, just talking to the planning and zoning commission, say, this is very important, there is the potential, and we, the wetland commission feels strongly that erosion controls should be in place so that the Quinnipiac River isn't degraded in any way by this project, or something like that, whatever you want to put on.
Okay, and I'll tell you exactly, and I'll tell you exactly why I would not do that. First of all, it's not our job to tell planning and zoning how to do our job, their job. They're intelligent people, they've got the things, they're going to do it, they don't need us telling them how to do it. Second of all, I don't see how you can put a condition of approval or a recommendation on a determination that there's no impact.
That's what Janice Small suggested, I'm sorry.
So in that case, um, I, I think that, uh, my own feeling is that a clear, just certificate, a determination that no application is required is sufficient. And I assume that, you know, planning and zoning will take it, take it from there. Again.
Any other comments from the commission?
No comments, just ready to make a motion.
Oh.
Okay, in that case.
The law department says you're, you're to act on the two things separately, so act for the sand separately and then act for the warehouse separately.
Okay, you can do that.
Would you repeat that, Aaron, how I'm writing this up to make the, uh?
No, you need two separate motions. So one is the sand excavation, and the other one is erecting the building.
Right, do them separately, so yeah, same, same wording, but just put in the word sand processing proposal for one and warehouse for the other.
Okay. Mr., uh, I'll entertain a, a motion, uh, under determination 18 dash 14.1, 528 Cherry Street, um, that with respect to proposed sand expression, I'm sorry, proposed sand extraction and sand processing, uh, does not need a permit from this commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, application D 18 4.1, 528 South Cherry Street, Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company, LLC, is not required to need an application in front of inland wetlands for sand excavation.
And processing?
Sand processing, yeah, that's just excavation and processing, sir.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Uh, vote to approve. Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, next, I'll entertain a motion regarding, um, request for determination 18 dash 4.1, 528 Cherry Street, Wallingford Industrial Development Improvement Company, um, regarding a proposed warehouse and office development, uh, to be located on 18 to 20 Tully's Road, does not require permitting.
Now, I have a question for the applicant, you're pretty sharp on the regulations. If you're, if the applicant decides he's going to pave where he's putting the buildings, if it's more than 29,000 square feet?
It's definitely, we're going to have way more than 20,000 square feet of impervious surface, but because all of the storm water that will come off of the impervious surface will, uh, be basically infiltrated, that's why we don't have any inland wetlands impact. Normally, as Aaron pointed out, it's when you're discharging that storm water somewhere else, but we're going to retain it in the site.
Okay, I was under the impression, Joan, that if the square footage met our requirements, then we had to have an application for it, but you're saying no. then we had to have an application for it, but you're saying no.
It says if it has an impact to wetlands and water courses, and again, because the treatment of the stormwater does not have an impact to wetlands and water courses, this is an unusual situation where we don't need to get a permit from you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, and application D-18-4.1, 528 South Cherry Street, Wallingford Industrial Improvement Company, LLC, be deemed, does not need a, the application for the erection of the building or the process, warehouse office development on the site at 1020 Tully's Road.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Darrell?
Yes.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, receipt of applications.
No, there are no new applications. I was expecting something from Nucor, but it turned out that they were just over the 50 feet, so they didn't need a wetland permit.
Perfect. Okay, item G, election of officers, there doesn't, we hear lacking enough permanent, the permanent officer in order to have an election, that's true?
Correct, you have to have a full slate.
Okay, so hold that over to next time. Reports and communications.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Violations? Or do you want, or is that?
I'm looking at a few things, not ready to make a comment, shall we say.
Okay. Uh-oh. Item J, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Not for me, I like it here. I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Do I have any discussion on the motion?
No.
Call for a vote. All right.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next meeting is June 6th.